I call, excuse me. I call the July 9th, 2019 meeting of Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clark, please call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lucas Berg.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. Uh, Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Tonight, Mr. Solomon H. Ashby Jr., City Attorney, returns to brief City Council on the Code of Virginia requirements for the electronic attendance of meeting members of boards, commissions, and public bodies. As technology advances, the opportunity to attend a public meeting by electronic means brings some logistical difficulties that may not be readily apparent. Mr. Ashby will address the pros and cons and the proper considerations for any change in City of Portsmouth policy. Our second presentation this evening, Mr. Ashby will also present, um, a, um, segment on the Southeastern Public Service Authority, better known as SIPSE, as it proceeds with its plans to provide waste services for its eight member localities for the next 20 to 30 years. The focus will be on civic engagement, which is necessary as the landfill operations expand. Tonight, Mr. Ashby will bring the current request for City Council's action to facilitate the proposed civic engagement. Mr. Ashby?
Good e- good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. As Dr. Patton has said, um, with the advancement of technology, so has the law advanced as it relates to governance and government operations. Um, as technology progresses, uh, one must determine whether or not it actually advances one's agenda or introduces certain entanglements. Tonight, uh, uh, we will have a briefing for you upon the, uh, proper considerations as you, uh, consider, uh, whether or not to, uh, amend your rules as it relates to electronic meetings, uh, in accordance with, uh, Code of Virginia and state law. Uh, so during this briefing, we're gonna cover, uh, a, a number of subject matters. First, we're gonna discuss the legal requirements for implementation of electronic meetings in a public body. We're gonna discuss the standard rules as well as the rules in case of a, uh, a declared emergency. After we discuss those few points, uh, we're also gonna discuss the logistical requirements in terms of, uh, what must be contained in one's policy and what those implications are in terms of conducting your meeting, should the city decide to move forward with that. Part of that consideration is the, uh, enhanced responsibilities of the chairman, uh, the head of any public body, in order to comply with the law. And, uh, finally, we will discuss the number of boards and commissions that could be, uh, implicated in such a change, as well as City Council's individual considerations. And the one thing I'll say in, in beginning, uh, this talk is, um, when I originally assembled this information, I also confer with the clerk, as well as Dr. Patton and others, uh, because, uh, the law does not fairly, uh, capture a number of the intricacies that must be addressed if you, uh, decide to change or implement this particular provision. First, let's talk about the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2, 3708. Um, the standard rules provide that a member of a public body can't attend a meeting by electronic means unless the following conditions are met. One, the public body must have a written policy allowing for the participation of members by electronic means. Second, uh, there must be, uh, an approval process that's been adopted by the public body, and it must be in accordance with state law. And so what we're gonna talk about, uh, throughout this is what the state law requires, and then at the end, we'll talk a little bit about what our current city code provides and how you may want to make some adjustments. Um, once a policy is adopted, it must be applied, uh, strictly and uniformly, without exception, to the entire membership of that public body. It must be applied, uh, without exception, and without regard to the identity of the person who chooses to attend by electronic means, or the matters that are actually on the calendars. So, for instance, you could not necessarily, um, adopt a policy and then say, "You can do this on any night except for a budget night." You can't electronically attend on, on budget night. You, you can't make those types of adjustments. Uh, you can't, uh, necessarily say, uh, "Council members, uh, can attend electronically, but the mayor, the vice mayor cannot attend electronically." You, you can't make those types of distinctions. Uh, so that's one, uh, a couple of considerations. There must be a quorum of the public body physically present, um, at the central location. Uh, the law provides that, and it also provides, essentially, that you can only have two attendances in a given year by electronic means. Now, what does that mean from a practical standpoint? In the discussions with Dr. Patton and Ms. White, essentially, there could be a public work session meeting with four council members here and three attending by phone. Um, that in and of itself, and I'm, I'm gonna kinda go back and forth through this discussion and invite your participation, but, Mayor.
That's a calendar year?
That's a calendar year.
Two, a calendar year.
That's correct. Uh, that presents some interesting dilemmas, because I'm sure we've all had a conference call of one sort or another. Uh, but when you think about the ability to have three or four people on the phone and near half, for all of our boards and commissions, near half not attend, and then the other half attend physically, it can create some difficulties in terms of the discussion. Even in talking with Dr. Patton and with Mr. Jones about the technology, not only do you have an issue of what you can hear and how you can participate timely and efficiently as if you were in the room, the question is, can you push a presentation out to that particular individual, and will they catch everything that's available in a discussion in the room? Dr. Pat? Mayor?
And, and we discussed, the entity, which would be the city, would have to provide, um, the kind of instrument that ensures that everything is heard, not only coming across the phone, but enough that it is recorded, as that person making a contribution to the
When we talk about the state emergency rules, uh, I think I've mentioned this in a couple of occasions, even the state-
Excuse me, picking up on what Dr. Patton just said, um, it sounds like it might be problematic, then, for a meeting in the council chamber, given the size of the room, the fact that, um, it's challenging even for the audience to hear us when we speak in the mic.
In, in talking with staff, uh, certainly, this room probably provides the best opportunity, but the ability drops drastically once you get outside of this particular room. Because, again, the law, uh, and I think we'll cover it a little bit, requires that whoever's attending electronically must be able to be heard here for everyone who is participating. The former iteration of the law required that, that person be somewhere publicly where they can, where the public could actually join them on that end of the conversation also. Thankfully, the, the legislature has kind of removed that requirement.
They're sitting in the hospital with a broken leg.
Then somebody could come in and sit in there, 'cause she's in, or he's in the meeting.
In a public meeting, so, and you'll see some of these changes-
On the beach in Maui.
Some of these changes have, uh, been made, but there's still some things that are a bit sensitive, but, uh, even if it relates to a state of emergency, we can have an electronic meeting, however, if the governor's declared a state of emergency, uh, it has to be, uh, some catastrophic nature that makes it impracticable for everybody to attend, uh, but we have to give the purpose of the meeting, and the meeting can only be held to address that particular The public body is still required to give, uh, public notice by the best available means, uh, contemporaneous with the notice to members. So where we have normally a three-day requirement for notice, uh, in a case of an emergency, they're not requiring you to have three days' notice. You can send notices immediately upon the need, but there, again, you're still making arrangements for the public to attend. So these are the emergency rules. Uh, and of course, you have to record the emergency and the fact that the meeting was held by electronic means, uh, and the type of communication method you use to have that electronic meeting. And so no, one would normally think, I just went through the emergency rules, which are scaled down because of the state of the emergency. So you can see that the regular rules aren't, uh, scaled down much. Uh, so let's talk about the logistical requirements. So, as I, as we said just a minute ago, the public body must make arrangements for the voice of the remote participant to be heard by all persons at the primary location. So, uh, typically, for those of you who work in particular industries, I've only seen this done in some of the most modern rooms that are set up for teleconferences, where it's sort of broadcast over the entire room, not, not necessarily the speakerphone, uh, and so that, that is a requirement by state law. One of the trickier requirements is that, uh, notice can be provided on the day of the meeting or the day before the meeting. Um, and there are two occasions, uh, or two circumstances of when that can be done. If the member's unable to attend due to a temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition, or the member is unable to attend due to a personal matter, and identifies with specificity the nature of that personal matter. Uh, so those are the two occasions, medical or what we deem personal. Uh, if the, if the participation by the member is, uh, for personal matters, uh, the public record has to identify their remote location, where the person is, you have to include it in the minutes, and the nature of the personal matter as to why the person can't attend your meeting.
That's a little-
So that's, that's a bit interesting and seems a little counterintuitive to, to have in the process, but that is what the law requires. If the member's participation from a remote location is disapproved because the participation violates the policy adopted, the disapproval also has to be recorded in the meeting. So, when we talk logistically, you're now gonna have a little pre-meeting before you move on to the regular agenda to address, uh, one's electronic attendance.
Go ahead, Mayor.
All right, um, I, I think, what, what Mr. Ashby's saying, I think how he explained to me, if, if, um, say, Mr. Glover is not gonna be at the meeting, he's gonna let you all know in advance he's not gonna be at the meeting. However, you all have to come into the meeting, and the mayor would say that Mr. Glover's not coming to the meeting, then you all have to vote to see if you all approve Mr. Glover to join the meeting in the remote matter. So it's, I told Ms. Ash, I said, "That's, that's kind of disruptive to the meeting," but you have to do it. You can't let him in until you all vote to let him in.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it, it's almost, uh, contrary to the HIPAA law, that you're in the hospital, would, would you want everybody to know specifically what you're in the hospital for? Uh, so that, or in the hospital at all. Or in the hospital at all. Yeah, exactly.
Or on the beach in Maui.
Right.
I, I agree, it does tend to walk up to other issues that we would normally not, uh, as a government, be volunteering, uh, for particular purposes.
I was gonna ask the question that Dr. Patton answered. The scenario would be, the mayor would call the meeting to order, make the announcement that we have a, a council member that's absent, and then we would take a vote on whether or not to allow that person to participate.
But that's what that, the, uh, legislation appears to invite, to the extent that, at least on the personal matter, you must have a policy that, in some respects, says the person can be approved or disapproved in accordance with that policy.
That's ready for Shannon.
Problems.
Uh, I agree.
But, but, but to, to, does it specify, when you say a personal matter, could, could the person that's not at the meeting just specify there is a matter of a personal nature? Do, do they have to have details specific to that matter?
The, the issue is, because the legislation speaks to a disapproval for not following the policy, it, it sort of invites, and we'll go, go to that in a minute, it sort of invites that there's gotta be some reasons or some rationale.
Okay.
And as, as we said, and you can't discriminate, so my standard practice is, you, you, better to have it in writing if you, if you wanna stick to it. So the question, it does beg a question, what is supposed to be the rationale? Um, so if the person is attending for medical reasons, uh, the public body shall include and administer the fact that they're participating due to a temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition. Now, I, I agree with what Councilman Moody said. It doesn't necessarily say you gotta go into great specificity, but there, again, we would normally not. If somebody called and we, we, uh, they said it's, uh, Solomon Ashby here at work today, typically, we don't say, "No, he's out sick," or he's, you know, we normally don't provide that kind of information, but this would require, uh, this particular identification for that member. Uh, when we talk about chairman's responsibilities and going to that question of what will be the policy, it, uh, the, the legislation clearly provides, uh, that the chairman will be the person receiving and addressing the request to attend, uh, the meeting, either on the day of the meeting or before. The second question is, uh, the one that was just, uh, asked, "Well, how do we adopt a policy or implement a policy that has to be determined to be correct, at least as it relates to personal matters?" And so where we are right now, if you were to move forward, you would have to put some level of detail there so that you could, um, adequately determine that you're following your policy without giving credence to personal issue. Uh, and so that would be part of a further discussion in terms of the adoption of a policy, as to what it would, uh, apply to. Let's talk about the additional council considerations. Uh, here before you is the list of the non-regional boards and commissions for which this, uh, City Council appoints members. So, um, as you all will recall, this discussion was brought about because some of the boards and commissions had raised a question about electronic meetings. And so, uh, this particular statute could potentially apply to all of these bodies. And some of these committees and commissions are larger than the City Council in terms of numbers. Uh, I believe so.
They are.
Any questions about the-
What's created in a, like, CDA, a political subdivision of the state?
I, it operates by state law, but there are appointees from the City Council. It, it is governed by state law, but, um, that, um, there are some other entities that have, there are appointments from this body, but they are governed by additional state law, as opposed to simply, uh, city code. Uh, the CDA is only one of them.
Elizabeth.
So, Solomon, if, if the Portsmouth City Council adopted Policy A, does, does that mean that any of these other boards or commissions that we appoint would have to follow our policy, or we could conceivably have 15 different policies?
Oh, conceivably, you could have 15 different policies, but here's the issue from City Council's standpoint. As you all know, your policy and practice, um, one of the things that this body has always been very conscientious of is attendance with regard to its boards and commissioners. Uh, one of the things about this particular policy, and let me go right here, um, you all have rules, procedures, as it relates to boards and commissions for which you appoint. Uh, one of them being matters deemed approved by the members unless such matter has received the affirmative vote of a majority of members voting. So these are the rules that you, um, provide, and the guidelines you provide for all of the folks you appoint. One, perhaps, matter, um, if this becomes a serious issue across the board, uh, one recommendation is, uh, and I'll go to here, one recommendation would be to, uh, alter your rules so that you advise everyone that you consider acting on behalf of a board or commission is by votes you take when you are present in a particular meeting. Because as you all know, um, there are regular procedures in place that if folks start missing meetings, that becomes a consideration for whether or not folks move forward. This discussion here certainly provides you the opportunity, as City Council, to express your position and policy on electronic meetings. If it becomes an issue where you need a method of enforcement, you can certainly rely on your attendance policy and practice, as well as this, uh, a, a potential modification, if you'd like to, to carry that forward. So let me, uh, with that said, let me back up one. As Dr. Patton and I said before, once you get out of sight of this room, the method and the opportunity to have electronic meeting varies considerably for all of the rest of these boards and commissions, when they move into other aspects or, or in other buildings. You have some capabilities in this room that you don't have even in the City Council chambers, so it becomes a bit difficult, uh, to address those technologies across the board for those 15 or so, uh, boards and commissions. The question came up, how are you able to see, hear, and participate in a presentation? If one of you were not here, you would certainly hear at some level what's going on, but you wouldn't necessarily track. Uh, let's take the instance, I remember Mr. Wright, the, the one night we had, uh, some issues, and he kept saying, "Please advance the slide, please advance the slide." We had to issue one particular, essentially, to have someone on the phone keep up with the modest level of technology, you would be back to that point. I'm now looking at page three, and then you would continue the conversation. So it is a different presentation if you have someone outside of the room. Uh, as we said before, it will, uh, extend the meeting while you address whether or not someone can or should attend. Uh, and then, again, um, as Dr. Patton said, there's this pre and post-approval telephone And you must also communicate a denial to a board member, if that's the occasion. No, when, you know, so that, that introduces some other sort of issues that, that, in some respects, may be unnecessary.
If, if we're sitting here, and Susie, Citizen Council Member, is on the beach in Maui, participating electronically, do we have to be able to see the, they need to be able to see us, but do we have to see them?
They don't have to see us.
No, they only have to be able to hear.
They don't have to be able to see.
They don't have to be able to see. And see, that's the issue, if you're talking about seeing, um, I believe this is the only room that has the potential for someone seeing someone. That's the only-
Frankly, if you can't, it's like, if, if you've missed a meeting, and for, for me, if I've missed a meeting and I come back and look at the, the video, you know, if I look at it right now, I'm, I'm seeing what Mr. Ashby is saying, I'm not seeing the reaction of you all, because the camera's over here.
Right.
It's a whole different thing to sit here.
And you, yeah, you miss all that non-verbal, uh-
Yeah, you miss the squishy faces and the questionable looks, yeah.
The other thing we talked about was, say that it is, say that it is a call-in, you wanna go into closed session. My question to Ms. Ashby was, how would you know that there is nobody else in the room or somebody in the room listening if you're in a closed session? And he just said, "That's a problem, Dr. Patton." It's just a problem.
So, um, with that, again, th- this is, um, to the extent that boards and commissions may have an issue, the reason we brought this forward was because council wanted to express or investigate its current posture with regard to this particular matter. And so that's why we presented it at, at this point in time.
Going back to Elizabeth's question, in order for the, let's say, the EDA to allow the policy to be in place for them, even though we may not allow it for ourselves, is that, am I understanding you correctly?
That was my question. I wanted to-
They may be able to implement it, but that doesn't mean they're still not subject to the council, their appointers' position in terms of fulfilling their duties, and that's why I suggest-
That was right there, would correct.
It, you have the opportunity to express your opinion, and you have the opportunity to provide your guidelines that, again, carry that particular issue out, because i- if the purpose, which I assume is physical presence is necessary in order to conduct, conduct business and the job, then you wanna make certain that they are there for the essential matters. And so that's why, in, in trying to look at what we already have in terms of, that probably expresses that point. In the ordinance, where you simply can express that point to the members as they come on a particular board or matter, and let's be clear, um, if, if I understand it correctly, there becomes an issue if you miss three meetings.
Yes.
So, it at least becomes a-
We only come at two.
And they're allowed two by state law, so the, you, you're gonna, you're gonna walk up to the edge if this comes into play. The person, as my daddy used to say, "You're playing with fire if, if, if you do this."
I'm not a fan of this idea. I could certainly understand, and I, I recall in years past, in, in this city, there was a, a member, an elected member, I don't know, back then, maybe it wasn't elected, of the school board, who had a stroke and had issues coming to meetings. And somebody, as an example, who had a stroke, might be able to talk and participate, but not physically be able to, to come and sit down. And maybe you might wanna make an allowance for some, something like that in a situation, but I, I crossed that bridge when I came to it. This doesn't excite you at all. I like, I think it's really important. If it's important for us to physically be here, I think it's important as well for our people we appoint to do the same, or we find somebody else who can.
That's a good way to break the ice. Let's get our opinions. Now Shannon, how you feel about it?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm still trying to process all that information. You know, I, I don't have an opinion, but one thing I do right, right this minute, but one thing I, I would ask, I, I do see the relevance of having this in this, in the case of an emergency, where we couldn't all be together. I think there's relevancy in that, because there could be some city decisions that we have to make, and we need to be able to communicate with one another. So in that regard, I think it makes sense, but I, I just really haven't had a chance to process all of it.
Pick it up from that point. We have the right to do that if we do nothing.
Yes, if, if it's a declared emergency, that is operation rules across the Commonwealth.
As he did for the last, last year's storm.
Right.
Okay, Nate, how do you? Okay, Nate, how do you?
There's so many rules, it makes it difficult. I think it was done that way for a reason, to discourage it from being done. And like I said, if we can already do it, just like Shannon said, in, in an emergency, then we already have what we need. It shouldn't be regular practice.
I think if it's no mandate, if it's not broken, don't try to fix it. I mean, this was, this was a lot. And, you know, I think we're gonna be in some deeper holes if we, we put this in place and, and try to finagle our way out of it, so.
I'm not in favor of it. I think it's extremely important that you attend the meeting in person. A lot of things go on, body language, comments that may not be picked up by the person who's in the courtroom, a hospital bed, so I, I say leave it alone.
First of all, when we talk about body language, is it what do we say, or what do we twitch, or wink, or, or what we say? So I'm kind of confused with that one, but it's too many variables to me to deal with that electronic situation other than an emergency. And we would have to put some in-depth thought in how to deal with it if one of us was injured and to what degree and so forth. So they would be the only two reasons that I would even want to consider.
I share the, the same thoughts as the, yes, yes.
I was just gonna say, I, I have sat in the meetings in this room in the past where somebody got stuck somewhere on an airplane or something and called in and listened. No voting, no real participation, but no different than when we've, when we've had Sherry Neal call in to give us an update from the general assembly before we had the technology to see her face at the same time. But that's always available. You know, we can, if you are stuck somewhere and you can't get here, somebody can FaceTime on Facebook, you know, if you really want to hear, you know, but not, but not take a vote. Things, things do happen, but when I'm on the dandy, I don't want to attend a meeting.
Go back for a slide to the language. Let's, no, right there. Let's get a sense of whether or not we want to move forward with that. Shannon?
So we are going to get a sense of the item number three, no matter shall be deemed approved by the members unless such, that one, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's what's required.
Yes, yes, I mean, that's.
No, that's, that would be new language.
The red part would be new. Your, your, your language starts with has received affirmative vote by a majority of members, period. That's where your existing language.
Yeah, but then there's no choice but to be physically present to vote right now.
Correct. Well, yes, I'm not aware of any board or commission that we have that have any electronic rules in play.
What this would do is sends the message that we're not for people participating in our boards and commissions through electronic means.
Right.
And so, so, so to the point, after I read it, yeah, I, I think just as we discussed, you should be physically present, you know, if you're gonna participate in the meeting that's voting.
Like the planning commission.
Yes.
If it's a public hearing, you're gonna miss.
That's exactly right, so I.
All right, how do you feel about it, Nate?
Oh, I, I agree with it.
Yes, I do.
Physically present.
Okay, so the direction, and I agree, let's bring that back so we can formally adopt that, whatever the format we need to be.
We will.
Physically and mentally.
Because we are denying and agreeing to not move forward, so we don't even need to present this to the boards and commissions.
No, 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 I, I think, you know, you, you all have your interview process and that sort of thing, and your conversations and your attendance. And so I, as I understood it, you all wanted this briefing so that you could brief them on council's position as it relates to electronic.
Yes. Okay, so you'll bring this back?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Certainly.
Mr. Ashwell, that, we bring it back in a resolution?
Uh, ordinance, because it's changing.
Resolution, ordinance, okay. All right, change in.
Amending the ordinance.
Amended, okay, thanks.
Mayor, vice mayor, and council members, the second issue for tonight is the, as you all are aware, I'm the, one of the representatives to the Southeastern Public Service Authority, commonly referred to as SIPSA. Tonight, we're going to give you a brief update on where SIPSA is and a request coming from SIPSA for council's assistance and participation of efforts to secure our waste management facility for the next 20 to 30 years. As a bit of background, and I'll, I'll be brief because time is running, SIPSA currently operates its landfill in two areas, which I call Cell 5 and Cell 6, and it currently uses Cell 7 as a borrow pit to obtain field dirt and cover dirt for the other two landfill areas. The estimated life under the current operation for Cell 5 and 6 ranges until about 2027, Based on the growth projections, Cell 7 should provide an additional 10 years approximately of landfill life. And so Cell 8, which is under consideration or for which this, this request addresses, will be necessary in 2036. And let me give you a couple of graphics to identify what we're talking about. This is an overhead shot of SIPSA. Cells 1 through 4 at the top are currently closed. SIPSA is currently operating and utilizing Cell 5 and 6. As I said before, Cell 7 is being used for cover and fill material currently. They are currently in the process of obtaining the proper permits to start utilizing, obtain the approvals for Cell 7 and 8, which would be on the right-hand side, the upper right-hand side of this diagram. SIPSA will begin the process of amending its current solid waste permits in order to allow for the use of Cell 7 as a landfill and not simply as a borrow pit. And SIPSA is also working on the necessary components for the approval of a wetlands permit in order to address Cell 8 and Cell 9. In the process of getting those approvals at our last SIPSA board meeting, SIPSA approved a resolution to issue an RFP to proceed with an environmental impact study in support of an application for development of Cell 8 and 9 landfill. But that environmental impact report requires input from a city council-appointed citizen landfill advisory committee. And that's the purpose for which I, we come tonight, to get your assistance.
Does each member of SIPSA got to have to do this?
Correct. The request has gone out to all eight localities. They have to address this in the next 60 days. Again, as you all are aware, the landfill is situated in Suffolk, so that, that is the most direct impact. However, as some of you may recall, in 2006, when we were addressing prior cells and their activation in terms of utilizing those cells, we did have a citizen advisory committee at that point in time. And in 2006, Mr. Luke McCord and Mr. Gary Leggett were the appointees to that.
But the advisory committee is for the whole footprint of SIPSA, not each individual locality has an advisory committee.
Correct, correct. There will be 16 members to this committee.
And so they're looking for how many?
Two people from each locality. And as I said before, this is necessary so that we can get into the process of obtaining our necessary permits. And those processes can take somewhere in the neighborhood of six or eight years, depending on the process, so we have to start now. The suggested requirements for citizen advisory committee members are two individuals who are registered voters with some level of knowledge or experience with regard to waste management and landfills. The commitment is only a six-month time period. The expectation is there'll be only about three meetings in that six-month time period. They are requesting that the individuals not be elected officials or government employees. And the reason we're bringing it so close to the last meeting is because initially, the recommendation and, and the resolution asked for appointment by the end of July. We did push that back another month so that we have sufficient time to identify individuals to participate in this process. And so we did make a push to give us some additional time for council to identify and appoint citizen members for this landfill advisory committee. Any questions?
Can I get a brief synopsis of the marriage that we're involved in with?
With SIPSA?
With SIPSA.
See what new.
Sure. Let me try to, this, this is, this is where I lean on my technical expert, Mr. Mayor. The Southeastern Public Service Authority is a authority of eight locations, Isle of Wight, Southampton County, Suffolk, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, Franklin, Portsmouth, Norfolk, Chesapeake. Its purpose is to address solid waste throughout the region. And so as you all know, our transfer station is over here at Wheelabrader. There's a portion of our waste that is incinerated there at Wheelabrader, but for the entire authority, there's a portion that goes directly to the landfill. It should also be said that the ash that is created at Wheelabrader is also taken to the landfill. So much like many municipalities, the authority collectively is able to soften the expenses as well as the irregularities in terms of operations cost-wise. If there is a service failure or if there's a disaster, such as when we had hurricanes come in, we have the availability of relying on all of our authorities to address landfill issues collectively and thereby soften the adjustments that can happen in terms of landfill costs and expenditures. Over the last, I want to say two years, maybe three, because of the efforts of the SIPSA and the authority, we have cut our tipping fee just about half, just about half.
It was $1.25 and now it's $1.25.
And so.
67.
Okay.
57.
I, I will say this one point, and our contingency is always trying to, as best we can, push that number down further as well as utilize the facilities available in the city for the benefit of, of the city. Not to mention, let me, let me give the social plug to Wheelabrader, which is a contractor in that facility, of course, is a great corporate citizen in terms of the city of Portsmouth.
This, yeah, this is not related, but it is related. The news article that was in the paper yesterday morning about the new company coming to Chesapeake, which sounds much like the repower situation. Has SIPSA talked about this? Not that, but.
No, it, it did not come up at our last meeting. I will simply say that when SIPSA resolved this repower issue, I, I would not believe that that will ever be mentioned in anybody's generation, again, or anything similar in, in the near term. There would have to be, I don't even know what it would have to be for that discussion to move forward. What we're looking at currently is the relationships we have now, again, advancing with regard to the landfill, reducing what we put into the landfill by utilization of the Wheelabrader facility so that we can extend the life as much as possible. And thus far, the, the only thing I would say is tonnage is growing in terms of what's coming into the landfill, and that's because everyone is now participating, and so you get some increases over time. As somebody said in the back of the room, and I, I thought I heard Mr. Baldwin say this also, when the economy is good, you, you generate more trash.
Okay, so we need to consider appointing two people. We can discuss this this evening.
Certainly.
So question, is, is that all in those different landfills out through six that we're working with now, are they all above ground, underground or combination of?
They do consume a, a, a certain amount of airspace.
Can you go back to the contour? Actually, you can see the contours of the landfill, look at that upper left quadrant.
So, so this one here, as you see the lines, essentially that's how it slopes to its top. And so certainly as they become filled, they do take a considerable.
The photograph, you can almost pick up that ridge that goes off to the, like, to, to a block.
I'm going back to them army maps.
That's the infantry.
See, I'm a girlie girl, I never bend to the landfill.
Well, Mr. Baldwin would say, because I heard him, if you've been to Mount Trashmore, you have been to a landfill.
Okay, well, you have.
That's what I was gonna, Nate?
Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna ask a question, where, where we have, where that one is closed, do we have any idea how many years that has to remain closed before it can be fit for human, anything?
I, I don't know.
I don't, I'm, they're, they're closed landfills, so there, there's a cap on them, much like Mount Trashmore.
Yeah.
And then the methane gas will continue to be generated for decades to come, which is a better keeping the public safe from that. I don't know that SIPSA has any plans.
I'm not aware of any.
For developing any.
A hundred years from now.
Get your map ready.
Any other questions?
Shannon would appreciate that, he's a sailor.
He has to look at charts.
Thank you.
We apologize for the sidebar conversation.
Talking trash.
We're talking trash. All right, city manager's report. Everybody good on this presentation? City manager's report.
Yes, we have six, we have six items tonight on the city manager's report. The first one is FY 2020 Wireless E911 Service Public Safety Answering Point Education Program. This will be an adoption of an ordinance, accepting a public safety answering point grant in the amount of $3,000. And this amount is coming from the Virginia 911 Service Board, and it will be appropriated, the said amount will go into the FY 2020 Emergency Communication Unit Training Fund. The second one is an appropriation of funds or construction of a new waste management building, and this is the last component of, of this project, which wants, tonight, if this is adopted, the project can begin immediately. It's an adoption of an ordinance appropriating $1,088,645 from the Waste Management Fund, unassigned fund balance, and transferring the said amount to the Waste Management Building Construction Project in the FY 2020 Capital Improvement Fund for the construction of a new waste management building, which is out at the compound. The third is an adoption of an ordinance revising the monthly payment schedule for delivery of the city's local share allocation for the FY 2020 Portsmouth Public Schools Operating Budget. This is a request that came to the city manager through Superintendent Bracy. Just to give you some background, the city of Portsmouth FY 2020 General Operating and Capital Improvement Program budgets were. Capital Improvement Program budgets were adopted May 14, 2019. As a part of the adoption, the city council appropriated for FY 2020 $55,396,045 for the local share of Portsmouth Public Schools. Under the discussion, the currently local share to PPS is distributed throughout the fiscal year on a monthly basis. And in the budget that you adopted, there was a schedule there for the payment of the $55 million. The request has come forward to city staff that they would like to have the FY 2020 monthly payment schedule for the Portsmouth Public Schools with 1/12 of the $55,396,045 annual appropriation scheduled for distribution to PPS each of each month, beginning July 1, 2019. July 1, they received their $4 million appropriation. PPS desires to make an adjustment to the monthly transfer during the months of July and August. And PPS is requesting that the first two transfer amounts for the months of July and August be $6,266,337.08, and that the remaining monthly distributions be $4,286,337.08. That would mean after July and August, distribution of the $6 million, the remaining 10 months will be the 4.2 million. And this request for an adjustment is provided in order to provide adequate cash flow to cover health care and risk management obligations during the month of July and August. The difference between the 4.2 million that they received July 1, we will come back, if this is adopted, and provide, which we could do tomorrow, the 1.6, 1.6 million to make it the 6 million that they need for July. And then in August 1, we would distribute the 6 million. Then the other months, it will be the 4.2 million dollars.
Okay.
All right.
Any questions?
Okay. The next city manager's report is the FY 2020 Notice of Same-Day Access Award. And this is an adoption of an ordinance accepting same-day access funding in the amount of $12,266.25 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds for the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund by use for the Department of VHS to decrease wait times for treatment and recovery services. Members of council, you probably remember, it was last year where the state started the same-day access, which means that a citizen who needs the services of behavioral health care, the day that they come now, they can get all of the clinical assessment of any individual during that, the open access period that they are there. What the state found and what behavioral health care found, as they did in the past years ago, the person came and registered, but the person left, and it was very difficult for them to get the people to get back. So soon as they come, they can get this one-day access, start what they need to start, and then that helps them to come back more. So this is a very good, an additional funding to continue this. The next is the FY 2020 STEP Virginia Outpatient Service, and it's adoption of an ordinance accepting STEP Virginia funding in the amount of $195,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Health set to provide and coordinate outpatient services. STEP stands for the System Transformation Excellence in Performance Program. It's a state initiative, and it is outpatient services for child and adult mental health and substance use disorder services. And the last one is the development of a school funding formula. Adoption of a resolution establishing a committee for the purpose of developing a school funding formula for the city of Portsmouth. To give you a little background, as a part of the FY 2020 city manager's budget proposal, the city manager recommended to the council the development of school funding formula for use beginning in the FY 2021 budget process. On April 8, 2019, the city council received a presentation on the use of school funding formulas by localities in Virginia and the proposed process for development of formula as recommended by Mrs. Ann Seward of Ann Seward Consulting LLC. As a next step to facilitate the development process, a resolution has been prepared establishing a joint committee of school and city representatives tasked with the development of a recommended formula for city council's consideration, adoption, and use in the FY 2021 budget development process. To ensure collaborative process, it is recommended the committee have the following representatives. And Dr. Bracy and I met. We also met with Mrs. Seward, who has worked with the localities, and these are the proposed persons to serve, the positions to serve, no names here. One city council member, one school board member, and you all have your education layers on, so we were thinking you all would determine who that would be. The city manager, the school superintendent, the chief financial officer, the school chief financial officer, the city budget officer, the school budget officer. One city independent education representative, Dr. Bracy said that the schools would like, he would like for that one to be Dr. Roberts, who served briefly as their interim CFO before Mr. Falk came on board. And one school independent education representative. And one person that had been mentioned, who has very much engaged in education, not only locally but in higher education, is Dr. Woodhouse. So that would be one that Michelle Woodhouse, that one could be considered. So this came forth because it was part of the budget, and council, I mean, the city attorney determined that you all had to approve this for us to go forward. That concludes the present, the city manager's report, but I have two, three things to call your attention and report back. A Portsmouth 311 launched on July 1, and all wire carriers, which are Cox, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and the wireless carriers of AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile have completed their programmatic setups. Sprint customers do not currently have the 311 casability. However, Chief Information Officer Jones is working with Sprint on behalf of the Portsmouth citizens, encouraging the carrier to complete the programmatic setup. They can do it in quick time, but they have not done it yet, so he is working with them. There has been multifaceted advertising campaign. You've probably seen them on billboards around the city. We've used all media methodology, being television, radio, outdoor, digital, online, interactive text messaging, and on the city's website. So it is a three-month campaign. And that it opened on July 1, the morning at 8:00, calls started coming in. By September, Mr. Jones will be able, will come back and make a presentation to show you the difference of the amount of calls that are true 911 going to 911 and the hundreds that are coming in to E311. So also want to call your attention that the laying of the fiber for the city's fiber network started on yesterday, the 8th of July. The project began along Crawford Street. It's going to go all the way out to Crawford Parkway, London Boulevard, and move through Old Town through different phases. Information Technology will provide the information mapping schedule for the laying of the fiber. That'll be in your package, so that you will know where they're going to be going next. And the project's going to take 18 months to two years, so it has already started. Also, in your boxes, your mailboxes, you have the FY 2020 budget books. They are, it's online, in the libraries picked up today, and it's also on the city's website. Those are the only things that I have here.
We have two public hearings. Just be mindful, everybody. Protocol is that we'll ask the applicant to explain the application, give them 10 minutes, and Madam Clerk, if you would, time that, please. Then I'll call upon the city manager, and the city manager may call upon...
Mr. Baldwin.
Mr. Baldwin. We have one resolution at the end.
Yes, sure.
Want to speak to them?
The governor's motion.
The resolution was to go to the General Assembly for the special session, which has been, the gavel's down, they're going home. I think that's a moot point now.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, it's certainly your prerogative. We did receive information from Ms. Neal that should the council decide to put in a resolution, they will forward that through via mail and present that to the governor, or we will present it to the governor more directly. But there are opportunities to put that in front of the General Assembly when they reconvene.
Well, did they take any action? Because I hadn't heard.
No, they didn't take any action.
No.
They took action until November. After the election.
Until November.
They moved all of the bills that were taken into consideration and moved them to a committee to be reported or addressed in November.
Do we want to discuss this tonight, or make this part of what we consider as our legislative package for 2020?
I think it deserves a lot more consideration and discussion.
2020.
I would be willing to wait.
I do, too. It's a lot to discuss there. Plus, the resolution contain an error anyway. Bump sucks.
All right, so when we get to this point, we'll take no action. We'll pass it by.
Is that the right to pass it by?
No, they would have to.
No, it's not on the agenda.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, it is not on your agenda. It was...
Excuse me. She got it.
It was added to the agenda today, so that council would not have to add an item to the agenda. So you might want to defer or withdraw.
If we table it, that means it's going to come back, so we'll remove it from the agenda.
Okay.
We'll do that early on.
Okay.
After, after we approve the minutes. Is that really working? Come by?
Yes. I should tell you.
Good. All right.
I should tell you. Let's take it close.
Is that it?
Yeah, we've finished.
For, yes.
All right, let's go to council liaison reports, and Shannon, do you...
I do not have any liaison reports at this time.
Yes, yesterday morning, attended the Towater Community College Workforce Solution Advisory Committee, and it was pretty neat. We had a tour of one of the rooms, and it was at the ODU Tri-City Buildings that we spoke of recently that's technically in the city of Portsmouth. And we toured the labs for the Certified Medical Assistant. And we were going through there, and evidently this program started, they said they started in 2016. They've had about 258 students go through this program since they started. They have two classes. One is there at the Tri-Cities Building, the other one is held in Virginia Beach. It's interesting, it's a 14-week class. They go three nights a week. They have a day class or evening class, which is set up in case somebody's working, they can attend a night class. Another thing, there is financial aid based on income, and they can take this class for as little as $108. And the, so they go through this class, then they have a three-work externship. They said, out of everybody that's gone through these externships, there's only one person that wasn't hired by the company that they went to work for. So it sounds like a very good class, something that, you know, we can help advertise, get people in it. Other thing we were talking about was HRT has done a partnership with TCC, and they're doing a Drive Now program. They start a class tomorrow that has 11 students. They start tomorrow, and they go through, I believe it's the 27th of August. It's at no cost to the students. They will have their CDL, when they graduate, they will have their CDL and a job with HRT. In addition to HRT, Titan Industries, Virginia Beach Waste Management, and Chesapeake Public Schools have done similar partnerships. That was something, you know, I know we have a lot of CDL drivers in the city, so that's maybe something we could look at to partner with them to help recruit employees for us. So that was it. Thank you.
Yes, Planning Commission, I think everyone got an email about the use permits that'll be coming before us, but Planning Commission has approved three use permits that will be come for our consideration. One is Adult Daycare Center for Adults with Intellectual Disabilities over in Fort Lane, Crawford Parkway, Hatton Street. Another one is, a lot of discussion was a microbrewery in the Port Norfolk area community, 346 Broad Street will come before us. Concerns with the community was the parking, because there's no designated parking for that. And one item that the city council requested to expedite for the meeting for today is the Use Permit 1912 with the Paradise Creek Industrial Corridor. And of course, the screening requirements are outdated, and there's no reason to screen except for the ordinance requirement. So that wanted to come before us quickly, so that we can make some action on that. That's all I have.
That's in the report. The Regional Connectors Study Policy Committee met this morning. This is the committee that was created by the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization to study the potential projects in the next phase of HR 10. The Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission's projects, if and when funding becomes available. The discussion was about the model that's going to be used to try to determine congestion in the future. The future extends out to 2045. They're looking at three scenarios. One, in which there's greater-than-anticipated port development that will generate extra port traffic on the land. Another scenario is greater-than-anticipated urban development, people moving back to the cities. And the third is greater-than-anticipated suburban development. And these are not predictions, but they're trying to do some what-ifs. If this takes place, then where's the congestion going to be, and what needs to be undertaken? So what action was taken today was to give the green light for those three scenarios. Again, they're not predictions, they're just what-ifs. It's trying to look into the future and say, if we have big urban growth, what impact does that have, for example, here in Portsmouth? With that, I think we completed a work session. We need a closed session. And is there a motion?
Moved to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711A1. The purpose of discussing is considering prospective candidates, two board commissions, and pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711A7. The purpose of consulting with legal counsel, fully about the city regarding specific matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically regarding the city attorney's regular report to city council on the activities of his office, including litigation and potential litigation.
Second, we have a motion that has been made, signed by Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas-Burgh. The discussion of the motion, ready for question. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lucas-Burgh?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.